This is the June 11, 2024 Open Public Meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees being held via hybrid format, allowing remote attendance. First, I will take a roll call to confirm that trustees, library staff, persons anticipated to be on the agenda are present and can hear. Starting off, KK Hill.
Here.
Rob Pettit, joining us later. JF Yalkov.
Here.
Michael O'Neil.
Here.
Like a small.
Here.
Josh Small.
Here.
And me, Eric Grave, I'm here. Library staff, library director, Albert McLean, here. Assistant Director Dimitri Kuriafis. Administrative Specialist Jenna White.
Yeah.
Program Specialist Gail and Dennis.
Yeah.
And Recording Secretary Faith Chris.
Yeah.
All right. Does not look like we have representatives from the Library Foundation meeting tonight. So looking forward. This meeting is being recorded. If there is a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at 7:00 PM on July 9, 2024, unless we change that plan. So I hereby call this meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at 7:04 PM. Just a reminder, citizens are welcome to speak for up to three minutes each, not to exceed a total of 10 minutes. Citizens are encouraged to inform the library director in advance of their intention to speak. Those who provide advance notice will be called upon first, while the board will take public comments under advisement. There may be no opportunity for discussion or debate during this portion of the meeting. Seeing no participants or citizens in attendance, we'll move on to our first order of business, which is the minutes. Request a motion to approve the minutes of May 14, 2024.
Move to proof.
Second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. All right. So any comments on the minutes, changes that we want to make?
Well, I suppose I'll make a small typo test of it. I think on paragraph three, that midway where it says J on page four, to review library progress. See that?
Page four?
No, paragraph three.
On what?
Page one. Page one.
Okay.
Paragraph three.
Okay.
In the middle of that paragraph.
Yeah.
Is that the full sentence? I'm just not.
J on page four to review library progress was corrected. I just put in the part that we changed. It's correct on the minutes, but I can phrase it a different way if you'd like.
No, I wasn't sure if it was.
You know, they asked that on.
I wasn't sure, like, you know, the other ones, someone noted, someone noted, someone noted, so I wasn't sure if it was just.
I'll check.
Words.
To get some minutes out.
But it's not a good deal.
Thank you. Anyone? I had a couple of things. In the section, new business strategic plan, we started on page four. Three to eight, two pages six. I got a little bit lost in the way that this was formatted. As to like, what sections were which, like, for instance, you know, about 40% of the way down on page five, there's increased access for seniors, it seemed kind of like dangling there without any holding. And so I just. It was a little hard to follow this. Also, like, some of the things were, like, there were paragraphs after these bolded headings, some of them there weren't, like, the investigate potential for generational programming, create a cohesive library education plan. It seemed like those didn't have paragraphs before the details on them, and some of the others did have, like, return characters. It was just, it was hard to read through all that. I don't know if there's something we could do to standardize that or clean that up, but that would be good. The other thing I found was at the bottom of page six, the very last sentence there reads, "A draft with proposed phases will then be amended for review at the July meeting." I think phases meant to be priorities? Is that, is that correct? Because I think this is about setting the next action plan. Yep. So I think phases should be priorities in that sentence.
Just for point of discussion, would you rather have, like, bullet points in some of these, instead of, like, paragraphs for when people are going over their particular sections?
It's a good question. Thoughts? Anyone want to ask?
I had the same thought. When you were saying it, I said, well, I was going to say, should they be bulleted, but to this other phases and priorities.
Oh, yeah. So I don't know. Yeah, going back to the formatting.
So the formatting, if it's like, like where you see the trust funds and stuff like that, where there are, like, these little bullets that might be something easier to just know that it may or may not be a complete thought.
Maybe.
Sometimes you start the paragraph immediately after the bold language, and sometimes you skip a space.
Yeah.
Between starting that paragraph. So if you would just do, maybe just make them all consistent, maybe that would be easy fix.
Because most of it is taken from that review spreadsheet. Wouldn't it just make sense to attach that that chart to the minutes and just say?
As another appendix.
Rather than trying to reformat.
That review spreadsheet, though, is really meant to be like a, is not meant to be like a draft that's for internal discussion until we put out the final one. So I don't know that we want that necessarily. I mean, I don't know.
Some of the, some of the material here is definitely from that review, but there's other things that are discussion about each of these points that are kept in the minutes. You know, like, these details about Brett from UTO, and so these will join trustees, probably sworn as well. I don't think those were in the.
Why don't I try the bold with the skip that?
Or not skip, just you have them all directly after the bold, the space.
Take another version and Rob, do you want me to send it to you for them to look at for the next meeting, or has it sort of this format going forward, or what would be best?
Yeah. Definitely. Any other comments on the minutes? Well, let's have a vote on the minutes as amended. All those in favor of adopting these minutes?
Hi.
All those opposed? Right. Motion has unanimously. Moving on to the director's report.
Thank you, Eric. Some of the highlights for May 2024. These are highlights for last month, but insert some of the fun stuff we're doing this month, because I can't help it. But so in the reference department, Aaron did this great project with the Girl Scouts, which was sort of getting a jump on the summer reading theme of re-renew and repeat with the recycling program. The solar eclipse classes, the returns donation ceremony is just casting them today and finishing up returning those so they can be reused in another part of the hemisphere later this year. So that's, we thank the community for all of their donations and returning to use solar glasses so they can be used by kids and others around the world. Well, not around the world, it's not happening. Central America.
Yeah.
Thanks. And October. Yes. So that's great. And then the study room booking, really excited about this. So thank you. We got the funding for, to get this module from ASABET, which will really save a lot of staff time. Currently, they can attest to all of the staff time it takes when a staff calls us on the telephone. Even on a rotary telephone, the whole process seems so antiquated that I imagine people using a rotary phone to book a study room with us. You know, we have a spreadsheet that we manually add the information to. This module through ASABET is great, so we'll be able to push out all that work to the patrons themselves to make a booking, which will then be reviewed and approved by our staff.
When will that be ready?
So we're doing a launch at the end of the month. Because school is over.
Uh huh.
And our staff and our patrons, we can get used to it over the summer when use is low, lower than usual, so that by the time September hits and it's all all hands on deck, we'll be ready with that and have worked out any kinks. ASABET is a great company, so I don't think there'll be many kinks. Just getting used, we'll be able to train people during the past week of June and then starting the weekend July 1, we'll roll it out. So that's.
What's the plan for people who are calling in? Are, like, the staff going to put them into the online system, or are you going to say, no, please use our online system?
Yeah, we'll just do some education.
Yeah.
You know, in our July newsletter and communicating proactively with as many patrons as possible about the new process, but the days of us manually doing this will be over. You know, unless there, you know, patrons who, you know, don't have access or there's some issues, special issues, but most everybody, we will encourage to, and I'm sure they'll be happy to be able to do it themselves, whether or not we're open, you know, and they'll be able to make a reservation. Even be, now it's the day before. So that'll change. And so we're happy about that. The technical services department has some highlights from May, but the shifting and reading of a couple of collections on the second floor. You may have seen the World Language and yellow collections have been moved and it's got space for growth and display in order to attract the eyes of our patrons so that they can be more engaged with those collections if need be. The biography collection has been needed and also shifted before the nonfiction section. So now, well, this is a May highlight, but now we'll be focusing on nonfiction and pulling out the YA nonfiction titles from that collection to move them to the YA collection and then create more space for the nonfiction collection for displays within the rows of shelves. So they've done a lot of work, which you can actually see. Sometimes a lot of the work we do, you can't see, but this is one of those times that you can see some of the great work that Technical Services has done. The Technology and Archives Department, Danielle's been really busy in May, so she's upgraded and updated a lot of public and staff computers, including new CPUs, monitors, and Windows 11 upgrades. We have a new community room laptop, which is a big improvement here. When the public is using the technology here, that's a big help.
I understand there's a plan for the friends. Are you going to cover this?
I wasn't going to cover it, but.
I think the plan is for the friends to make sure there's also a Mac computer that's accessible here. Make it the, there's some, right, did you hear something?
Well, there are going to be further improvements.
Access, accessible for a Mac, not a Mac computer.
Right. So there will be improvements here that will have our tech company carousel do, that will improve the space for, for Mac users.
For accessible. I didn't mean computer, I meant accessibility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And in addition, we'll have some additional market.
Right, Gail and.
Just so you know, we're going to be probably the only building other than the school project building that lets Macs access the system. None of the other buildings in town do that.
It becomes important when you have guests who come, who are prepared to talk, and frequently they work with Macs.
Yeah. Thanks for that.
Yeah, friends. And that's, by the way, part of the money from the Doris Kearns Goodwin event. I mean, there's a plan to spend that money, but this is an example of that.
Danielle's also working on diving into our map collection and organizing it and getting it ready for digitization in the future. So we've seen great interest and success in other parts of the collection that we've digitized. Most recently, the Needham High School Yearbook Collection.
Yes.
Yeah.
You can spend the whole weekend getting lost in.
Looking your old friends up.
Yes, exactly. So.
You who went there.
Yes.
So I believe our collection, we digitize up through 2012, 2013, and the reason why we haven't digitized even more recent volumes is because we want to make sure that there are no minors, people who are still minors represented in those yearbooks when we digitize them.
So is there like a three-year period afterwards that, or is there like some time constraint that you're going by?
Yes, but I don't know what it is.
Yeah.
That's like the other day.
Yes.
Call a confident yes followed up by, don't ask me anymore, because I don't know anymore.
There you go.
But yes, yeah. And so libraries just do that. You'll, you probably, you shouldn't find, you know, libraries, digital collection of yearbooks, the most current yearbooks for that, if that makes concern. She's also set up the book stand, book scan station, so patrons can now, when they scan, they can print to the color printer. Later on, you'll see in the stats how the color printing has skyrocketed since we introduced free. But no, it's all good. It's all good. And then, this is really cool. Danielle and Erin have teamed up to rip apart all the old technology here so that Erin can use those parts in really creative crafts with teams. So they've had lots of fun destroying old hardware and salvaging.
Know how to do that.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Together, you know, Danielle's got the knowledge of how to rip them apart safely and Erin's got the eye for, like, what will work as a perfect craft, whether it be keychains or what have you.
So you're actually using them as crafts, not as actual technology parts?
Crafts. Craft parts.
The only reason I ask is because some of those, not a lot of them, but some of them do have some value, both from still use as digital components, especially teams are going to build digital stuff.
Yeah.
What's that?
They're making sculptures.
Right, right. No, yeah. Right, I understand that, but I'm just wondering if there is offering to other teams like the RAM or the CPUs or whatever, because there are plenty of teenagers out there who can build computers from that stuff and.
Yeah, we can explore that. We just need to make sure anything that we shared had no library information.
Right, right.
Data on it anymore.
The circuit boards aren't.
Yeah. But this is a fun start for some physical craft creation.
It may be worth talking to Danielle to see if she can identify whether any of that technology may have, you know, be usable and other than for craft purposes.
She would, she would not.
That's right.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's not useful for, like, modern stuff, but like, if you, like, if you want to build super computers or, you know, Raspberry Pis or whatever, there are kids that can do that kind of stuff, I mean, once.
It's, it's definitely bottom of the barrel stuff.
Right.
No more use. Yeah.
Better than keeping it buried up, I guess.
Yeah, of course.
Um. Yes, and the towns IT department, or the town schools IT department. They also ran that, their mountain of old stuff and I, the they have a company that they recycle what is left over after that. And the children's department called, held a storytime and tour of the children's room for 16 children and two adults from Temple Beth Shalom in May. And we can't get enough of talking about the egg hatching, because it was such a big hit. So we did have six of seven eggs, or seven of eight eggs successfully hatch.
Six.
Six of seven, and they were incredible. People really had fun. Christina, one of our custodians, suggested the naming of the chicks, which was accepted, so each chick was named after a member of the custodial staff. They really had a food out of that.
I can't believe how many hits there were on the webpage.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, almost 1500 on the Chicken Central part of the website. Yeah. We had the live cam. Yeah. No, let me, it's, we're being recorded, so I have to address that comment. I know it's facetious, but the chicks went back to the Southern New Hampshire farm where the eggs came from, and there are different, different things that they will do in their life, but one of them is not become food in the traditional sense. You know, when they pass, then we all become food for the earth, I guess. But there are different things, including they could be adopted by families who want to bring these chicks into their their life. But they have work to do and they will live on the farm, and they, they will not become, they won't show up in the mountains.
Good to know.
But they will die like we all do, so. We did have a complaint and issue about just the issue of us doing this, so. That's why I'm very sensitive to.
Somebody was upset that they had a camera that was watching something so natural.
Not the camera, no, just the.
What would happen to the map? That was the concern.
Well, this isn't the first year we've done this.
No, it was done last year. Yeah.
So.
Yep.
Okay. There's all these chickens in, like, elementary school. Am I the only one?
Couldn't watch it online. But everybody couldn't watch it all online.
I guess it's true. Right? No?
I don't think.
Your school is too poor. We raised chickens when I was in elementary school, like, the eggs and they hatched them and stuff like that, like, it's great or something. I don't know what happened to chickens afterwards.
Don't do it. Don't do it. So moving on. Personal news. Sad news. First, I have to apologize to Dimitri because in my could I have butchered his name even more than I did? I'm so sorry. That was very bad. I was typing too fast on Saturday. But as we know, Dimitri is leaving us after seven years of dedicated service. His last day in the offices next Tuesday, so an invitation was sent out to trustees today. We hope can join us Tuesday morning as we say farewell and give best wishes to Dimitri as he starts a new chapter in well.
So we are less, trustee, before you go, just to say how much we appreciate your immense work and, you know, just working with you as an individual and person, it's been a pleasure.
Great reader and a great person. It's, it'll be sad next same year, I'm sure.
Thank you for carrying us through the transition.
Yes.
And, and your, your love of doing outreach in the community. That's, that was, that was my first initiation to you, was hearing the reports of how you were going out to different communities and helping with the technology, good learning. And that real, that love of kind of reaching out to the community, it's just so important, like, it's just core of the profession, and I think you really, you know, exemplify that.
And I'll, I'll just add that in my time on the board, it's been obviously paralleled with your work here, and it's been a great comfort for me and I think all of the trustees to know that, that you were there. It's been a time of, you know, recurring transitions, and the library was extraordinarily fortunate to know that during any of these transitions, it was in good hands with you, and and that proved to be true every, every step of the way. And so, you know, I want to add my personal appreciation also for all you've done for the library over the years. Very much appreciated.
We were doing the website, I remember you really quarterbacked that and made it happen, which is huge. Such a big thing. In addition to all of your transition work, as much as I hate that it's well-pleased gain at our expense, I know that we'll be seeing you over there, because it's just across the border.
My second favorite library.
Yes.
Thank you all for your kind comments, and I appreciate all your patience and kindness through all those months and all those transitions. And Eric, Eric, thanks for saying that, because my core, I do love mission libraries and what we do. No matter how, how well off the community is, there's always Mimi's and groups of people pockets who can really don't get served and need that gap. So we're always, we have a purpose. It's not just reception. So thank you all. Those kind words were very embarrassing. Appreciate it. We wish you luck. Thank you. Thank you so much.
So it'll be hard to fill Dimitri's shoes, but when we attempt to do so, we'll be looking for the great qualities that Dimitri has brought here, his passion for public libraries and the work that we do, his dedication and flexibility and adaptability, which you've all seen over the transitions, stepping up and helping up, helping out to lead the library. So we'll be very lucky to get someone that as good.
Thank you. That's kind of good.
So more personnel news. Veronica's last day was Monday, June 3. We wish her well. She's starting, oh, she started yesterday in the town district as the head of their children's department, which is a fantastic town, fantastic library.
You must know it.
Yeah. So she'll have lots of fun there, and Jesse's a great director there. So we posted her position and we'll be reviewing those applications soon and setting up interviews shortly thereafter.
That's a part-time position?
No, this is a full-time children's librarian position in the children's department. There are only two Paula and this one. So we're really under the gun now with this position, especially as we approach summer reading. So we want to move quickly to get the best candidate as soon as possible in that position. Tish King, a part-time page, has resigned. She'll be working through the beginning of August here. She's moving on to retirement. Wish her the best. So lots of interview information. So this is even, even though I wrote this Saturday, it's already is more to tell. So yesterday, we had interviewed candidates for the position of part-time children's reference librarian. We will have more interviews tomorrow for that position. Next Monday, we're having a whole bunch of interviews for the four part-time circulation assistant positions that are open, and we will continue those interviews next Tuesday and Thursday are a ton of interviews for those four positions. So it'd be really exciting to get those five part-time positions filled as soon as possible for the summertime. And then we have Veronica's full-time position, and then in the next week or so, we should be hosting Dimitri's full-time position. So there's a lot of HR activity going on right now, which is happily taking up a lot of our time. This is, and it's very positive. Despite, it takes a bit. Mimi is a part-time member of our technical service staff, and she's on excuse leave until the end of June. Luckily, two of our part-time staff, one from the children's department and one from reference, have stepped up to put in some extra hours in that department to help us out. And we really appreciate Elliot and Autumn for that work. And then just, just a list of stuff. Meetings and people I've talked to since we met last time. Just want to bring your attention to the last one. I visited with Lizzie McGovern. She's the director of the Westwood Public Library. She's not new to Westwood, but she's a new director there. If you haven't been to Westwood Library since it was rebuilt, it is awesome. It's worth a visit, and it's just down the street. But Lizzie's got lots of enthusiasm.
Is she new there or she's been?
She's been an employee of the library for a while, but new as the director. But yeah, she'll be a great resource for me, getting to know Minuteman and just as a colleague. So that was really a great visit.
And thank you for all this outreach to the community already. I'm grateful. Get the ground running.
That's great.
It's very helpful to me to understand what I've gotten myself into. Yeah. Yes. So, you know, I met with Nancy Andre from Wingate, and we'll be doing some outreach with Wingate in July and August this year, some library kite sign-ups, and then some informational sessions about our digital. informational sessions about our digital collections, uh, for that, for those residents. So that's a, a nice relationship that will grow over the summer time.
Yeah, Hart, do you know that Owen College professor?
Yeah, he's a colleague of mine. Yeah, I play with his research as well. So it was a very interesting meeting. He's doing research, um, to develop an app that would help library patrons with, uh, vision issues, uh, navigate their way around the public library. So, uh, we were able to provide some information and, uh, offered ourselves up as a giving thing if he needs one.
Is that my e my eyes? It's an app up there that you could volunteer to be somebody's eyes.
He didn't mention such a component, but, um, yeah, I don't know. It's specific, so it's probably all secret, secret Owen stuff. It's an alternative to something like, like that technology. That is fun. He reached out to us, um, and we were able to, Danielle and I were able to meet and talk about research. So I'll skip the guest for now to the last, the director's court and move on to building and grounds. So, um, just want to give a shout out to the custodial staff who, um, made the Friends' most recent three-day book sale possible by bringing down hundreds of boxes of books from the third floor to this room, uh, for that sale. It was an immense amount of ju- work and as they always do three times a year, they did it without any complaints. And, uh, it was a big help to the Friends who raised, um, a lot of money, over seventy-five hundred dollars. From that three-day sale. So a pending item is no longer pending since Saturday. And I wrote this, the Mamava, which is a private lactation pod for public use, um, has been assembled, just on the second floor instead of the first floor. So it will be disassembled and assembled on the first floor. So if you want to see it, it's by the three study rooms and it's already been confused as a fourth study room. It will never be used for anything except for that tissue.
And it will live in the children's room?
It will not. It will live by where the photocopier is here, right around the corner. And we'll move the photocopier down so that it's very accessible, um, easy to find for people coming in to use it. So we hope that location will cut down on, uh, staff interaction. You know, I believe a lot of use will be from people who are, uh, who haven't been in this building for, who may be, um, using the app to find the closest Mamava. Whether they're. On ninety-five, uh, or what have you, uh, maybe stopping in to use it.
Is there a code that will go with that to like?
Yeah, so.
So that'll keep people from.
Yep, so it's locked and there's a code that's given to the, uh, person who needs to use it from the app. And they use that code to get into it.
So it's not the same code will be, it's each individual get?
It's, it's the same code. So we'll know, the staff will know what the code is, because we need to get in there, but it's locked. Yeah, so it's a, there's one, well, you can see ours if you want. There's also one at the Rosemary Recreation Complex in the lobby there. And I think there's another one in town. There's one at P S A. The DPW building. I don't know what P S A means. They have one there too. So this will be the third one that the town of Needham has and, um, ours, I believe others were funded through a grant that the HR department received. So, uh, no cost to us. So that's the Mamava. I'll get back to the chiller. I'll just say the basing work, um, you know, on the sidewalks and the staff area, um, we're just waiting for that to be scheduled. Now the chiller. So on late Mon- late Friday afternoon, we received an update about the new chiller. It initially was going to arrive tomorrow morning at seven. It's not. It's going to arrive, uh, seven AM on Monday, June twenty-fourth. The pickup is that the technician who will install the new chiller is not available until Wednesday, June twenty-sixth. So this is not like a delivery where the children would just be dropped off. The crane will arrive on Monday morning and we'll remove the old chiller from the roof and put the new chiller up there. This means that on Sunday evening, the air conditioning in the building will be shut off. So, uh, more information to follow because I have a meeting at town hall in the morning about this issue so that we can decide more actively what this means for the operation of the library during that week. The earliest that the new chiller would be operational is Friday afternoon. So from Sunday evening or Friday afternoon, there would not be air conditioning in this building.
Have we ever had that situation before where we know how big a problem it is?
It would really depend on the outside temperatures.
Been a couple of cases in the past where I think the AC went out pretty, pretty hot.
It was brutal. They had the fans going. That was your circulation vehicle. They're gonna have the internet following the installation of the chiller, just like with the chicks?
Don't go there.
Sounds like a jinx to me.
It was bad enough. It says out here, it says June twenty-sixth and it's actually twenty-fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, so that's just a typo right there.
So.
Has the town had this situation in other buildings that we talked, I guess there's nothing really comparable.
All the air conditioning in Pollard's not great, like that's like the school. Yeah.
Famously, I mean.
If they're kids.
Twenty-nine dollars for doing the air conditioning there.
Yeah, I mean, like Pollard, I don't even know they have central air. They might, but it's not good. Like, I remember when Mike was there, it's like, there were some hot days there.
I went there. It was hot, Paul.
They, I mean, it's one of the reasons for the extreme cost of the Pollard renovation is actually they have to redo the entire AC system.
Right, it's part of the.
Have we ever shut the library or closed it early because it was uncomfortably warm? Do we lack of it? Has that ever happened?
I mean, as far as I know, we never have authorization to do that. We never closed it.
I think it's, it's. I think we'll have to pay attention to the outside temperatures.
Right, yeah. That has a big effect on this.
Unionized libraries have that written in their contract for those like above eighty or eighty-five building closures. We're non-unionized libraries, so it's really imagine before the town.
So they would be curious to know that maybe. I'd have to be going.
So, um.
It's cool.
After this meeting tomorrow, I'll be providing staff and receives more details about the plan. But I'm just letting you know now that the initial plan has changed. There's no chiller coming tomorrow morning. And more details to follow as we figure this out. It would be good to at least make sure everyone has explicit, an un- understanding of how we make that decision explicitly to, to close it or not. Like there's probably, like if we know the process.
Yeah.
Who we talk to at one point, you know, like, what are the things that that person needs to know in order to make that decision?
Just thinking, probably would be K to K.
Right, yes, yeah. I assume that it's the town manager, deputy town manager that has the authority to close a building. Keep it back from this. Yeah, so, yeah, the, the barman would make a recommendation to. Yeah.
A town actually is the one who controls all the heat and, uh, air condition. So that would make linear sense.
So. Wait for that email to come to you. But, um, remember we have incredible digital collections. Hundreds of thousands of items.
If you're looking for a hit.
Hey, I found some great stuff in the magazine collection. I was reading that. I wanted to know this like art in the back and I discovered an artist in Australia who has really cheeky names of the arts. And one of them on sale is a person who says, you seem stressed all the time. That's what it's called. It's very bright. The artist has ADHD and it's, uh, very cool. So.
Great. Love this. So that's some building and grounds information for trustees tonight. Moving on to the financial report. So the operating budget, which has been provided to you, shows that we are coming down to the end of the fiscal year. And, um, while our salaries show a nice balance that we'll be turning over to the town as unused funds, you can probably understand why. And, uh, we're still working on getting, um, our final bills in for expenses and book-related invoices. So we expect, uh, that thirteen, that thirteen point five percent balance to drop. As we make sure we use all of those financial resources, provide the best, uh, collection and services to our patrons.
One question, I noticed that we do use some state aid to fill in, um, for paying, I guess, unexpected staff expenses. And yet at the same time, we're handing, um, um, unspent, uh, salary money back to the town. So I'm just thinking, let's, I'd love to visit that going forward when we come to state aid, whether that's best use of state aid, especially once we're, when we're not spending our full personnel budget.
Well, I think we, we talked about this at a recent meeting, uh, that the fiscal year twenty-four library salaries is encumbrance, but we haven't actually pulled from it. And so it's there if we need it, uh, but we don't, we don't have to do anything. It stays there as long as.
You might be also remembering that last year when we utilized Biblio Times to pay for some temporary staff. Because of how our funding is structured, we were not able to utilize our payroll line of the operating budget for temporary employees.
I guess that's the point that I, I wonder, you know, I'm curious about the fact that our structure is set up such that, uh, as you said, we can't access, we have to spend state aid money instead of.
Yep, that was a unique situation. So it was just that one stretch of time last summer. We haven't had to do that since then. We absolutely would prefer to, um, hire staff and keep that.
Next, um, speaking of state aid, the state aid report is here for you. It shows our account balance just over a hundred and forty-one thousand after we paid, uh, the most recent bills out of our library state aid. So we've received all of our FY twenty-four, uh, library state aid payments from the MBLC. And then moving on to the trust fund. So trust fund documents. There are two documents here. One we'll be voting on, but, um, just the library trust fund spreadsheet that was provided to you. Shows the, um, FY two thousand twenty-three interest and the gain and loss that each of the trust funds was, uh, made or lost. Well, luckily this year, gain, only gains we see, FY twenty-three. Normally this information comes to us from the treasurer's office in the fall. And, uh, we use that information in the fall to craft, uh, a spending plan using some of that interest for the following calendar year. We did not receive this information until two weeks ago, uh, because there's a new treasurer. So, uh, we have received the information. It just came in late May rather than in November. So, uh, I just point that out. Is when you see the spending plan, uh, while we have specific categories of spending, uh, for, uh, some of the interest from the trust funds, uh, it may not seem as specific as it has in the past. Due to that, but also because, uh, it gives us flexibility, our staff flexibility and, uh, saves time on following very specific amounts that, you know. You know, so, uh, it gives us the flexibility and saves us some time, uh, while still hitting those goals that, uh, we see, see in our strategic plan and in our, uh, action plans, uh, for professional developments and material spending, uh, is, well, we can talk about that when we get there. Did we, did we find that once, when we saw the gain and loss numbers, did that, um, change any of the trust funds in terms of their, uh, expendability? I know that's been an issue we've been seeing all year in the library trust funds report. Was that like, basically none of the balances were expendable except for like a handful of funds? That changed once we finally got that interest number?
Some of our trust funds are still, the expendable balance is still showing as negative.
Right.
And this is because we had a couple of bad, well, we, not just the library. There are a couple of bad years for everybody in every realm. Um, and it might take a few more years for some of our trust funds to fully bounce back. Some of these start off with a much smaller balance. It's kind of a logistical puzzle to see how it might have happened over the years where some of them are negative and some of them are not. But it historically, not every trust fund with an expendable balance has seen that amount spent. And so those had more of a cushion and bounced back faster.
So, yeah, that's just, so I understand. So if we see a negative, um, not, a non-expendable balance in the negative, that's, that's basically what you're saying is that the, the investment has, um, lost money.
No, the non-expendable column shows us how much, based on the original creation of the trust fund and over the years from all of the interest, this amount here in the non-expendable column is of the total trust fund, how much is not expendable.
Like that we want to hold in reserve to get stewards.
It's not negative.
So it's not negative. It's just that like, it's avail, it's there, but we're not gonna spend it.
Cause I was wondering why, like, why the non-expendable balance is sometimes larger than the actual total fund amount that's.
The only time that that happens is the in the state fund, just based on the inception timing.
But there's actually a few of them, so, so far as I'm seeing it, like, uh, Lois Carly says we have a total of fourteen thousand nine and non-expendable is actually higher than that. Just trying to follow.
So that's where you see the balance expendable column when those balances are in the negatives. Like that would indicate that we need to, we cannot pull from that and we would need to make sure that it continues to grow or reach that principal level that we want to be non-expendable, right? Right. So we have fourteen thousand nine twenty-six seventy-nine. We, we, we want it to get to sixteen thousand eighty-two before we spend money out of it.
Thank you for explaining that.
And this is as of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. These numbers.
No, it's from June thirty.
Okay, even though it says fiscal year twenty-three gain loss.
Well, fiscal year twenty-three ended on June thirty, on twenty twenty-three.
And, um, PDF is sort of its own thing. And so that, you know, the friends make their large gift to the library, which goes into the permanent donation fund. So that money you won't see on the trust fund interest spending plan because it's a separate thing. It's not really a trust fund.
So that's us from my own knowledge base. This very last number, this fifteen thousand nine forty-eight seventy-nine, the very last column, that is theoretically money that is spendable that we don't have, we have not budgeted for, or no one has budgeted for that money currently?
I think you'd have to take out the negative amounts under funds expendable.
No, that is, yeah. It's, it's very, the very, very last number.
So of that.
Is that to- is the total of the funds expendable?
If we wanted to, we could vote to encumber from all of the various trust funds down to the penny.
Gotcha.
To increase the encumbered amount.
Yes.
However, it's a complicated game to play because if we do that and there is a bad year, then we don't have that.
Right, right. I, I understand. I understand.
And so until June thirtieth, we don't know what, we don't, as we're moving money out of the trust funds to pay for expenses while we're still counting on it earning interest, it's a good idea to keep a little bit more of a cushion.
Right, I'm not saying we have to, I just, I just wanted to know.
We could if we wanted to. I don't want that level of trust, I don't, I don't.
Get chicken and salad.
In reality, though, so for example, you know, the Greenwood Fund has thirty four thousand dollars. So we could spend that even though that's more than fifteen.
So our, our plan is sort of the encumber total, the hundred fourteen thousand is money that we will spend this calendar year, calendar fiscal year. And we've been conservative by leaving sixteen thousand that we could have spent on the table. That's, those are the trust funds, so, sorry that came so late to you. Moving to the statistical report. Which you've received. Several statistical reports, so the circulation report, there was a question last month on the second section of this spreadsheet, second line says transfers, what does transfers mean? And transfers means, Deborah Love at our circulation service told me, transfers is everything we put into a gray crates and everything we take out of a gray crate, gray crate. So a gray crate is what goes into our statewide delivery system. So that is things that non needed, library patrons are borrowing from us, things that we are, non needed libraries returns of our items, return of their items, so, and that's a quarterly figure, that's why on this report it's polite. So we report that to you as we get it, and that's a quarterly. Just wanted to bring your attention to the, a couple of numbers here, the entered library number, the cumulative number for this fiscal year. You'll see it's twenty five thousand one forty eight, you'll see for April, we were just under twenty three thousand people entered the building. So we're already at sort of like a thirteenth month within this fiscal year of people entering the building. Which is great and amazing.
Great.
And just means a lot more work for us in all sorts of ways they're using us. But that's a really interesting number, this is just April, so we've got May and June to add to that number to grow. So. So if you were to examine this number in comparison to like, you know, total circulation numbers or other things, you know, reference questions or program attendance. It doesn't all add up. So people are here for all sorts of reasons, whether it's study runs or just studying at tables, all the teens who use, use us. So there's a lot of usage that of those twenty five thousand people doesn't show up on this chart. Another I mentioned earlier is the black and white and color pages printed, oh, this is April, so we started that in May, right? So, okay, so why, I don't know, but you can see the black and white pages printed has fallen and color pages increased a lot. So it's at this point in, in April, they were paying for their, we got their money. But those numbers, yeah, now that's free, there may be more color printing happening.
Maybe they were printing all their pictures of flowers this spring.
Any question on any of the circulation or the library data here? I did note in the narrative, the short narrative to this, that we did discover and pick up in the reporting for overdrive data. So I don't know if you have any question about that explanation. We've corrected that for the past two fiscal years and included the circulation by native patrons of items licenses checked out that belonged to other library networks that aren't Minuteman. Because if you're a library user and you've downloaded and you've done your work and found a new library network in the States and downloaded, you can search the entire state through the, and have access to all of those collections from the BPL to sales to CBT Mars, all of them. So that data is now. It was not clear in, the information we see from Minuteman, that it was not included in the monthly statistics. So it was not, it wasn't apparent that we weren't reporting the right numbers, but now we're included into that, so those numbers will be correct.
And are those numbers all materials plus database or materials?
Overdrive specifically? Just, just the digital licenses we work as, so ebooks, the audio books and digital magazines. Canopy is.
Database.
Right, but that, Canopy would include it under downloadable video along with Uplink, but not databases. Moving on to the first statistical report, which is the collection report, the new item summary report. I don't know if you have any questions on that, but you'll see, we continue to, in April, well, this in May, to read the collection. Make it much more patron user friendly and create space for all the new items that we are adding every month to the collection. Getting ready for the first, the fourth phases of construction as we renovate the library. Questions, I'll move on to the DI report, you can see here, first I'll just talk about the staff before I get to the spreadsheet. I think I mentioned last time that we're adding Hindi and Bengali language and that's some great work that Alison and Tamara are doing. They voted the first part of these new materials, so that can be a great addition, not just for native patrons, but for Minuteman. Patients who need access to those languages. And Alison has worked with the Need and Diversity Initiative, we have a, we had a race amity day display of items that related to the program that they were holding, I think it was last, was it this past weekend on Sunday? Or it's this upcoming weekend, Race Amity Day in the middle. And then materials purchase here, twenty five adult fiction and fourteen photographic novels and the displays that we've had in May for DI efforts, D I V efforts, and children's department. Lucia is working to bring in some Chinese storytimes to begin again in July. And let me, it's a donation of some Arabic children's books, which is nice, they purchased forty items for the children's collection and had some displays that highlighted the diversity of the children's collection.
Just to ask, Chinese storytimes, I noticed that we do have an increasing Chinese population, are these in Chinese language storytimes?
Yes, they are.
They are, okay.
Thank you, Jay. That was one of those questions where it was going to be, yes, don't ask me anymore.
The donated books in Arabic, this is, this isn't a gift. Would we have to accept it as a gift?
Yeah, like, is this something that we have to accept as a gift?
Let me check on that for you.
It could be that it missed my cutoff for the guests. I have a running spreadsheet where I track everything, so you might see it on next.
Got it, okay. It's a lot, just want to make sure we don't, we don't miss that.
Thank you, eagle eye.
These, these are new books?
I don't know anything about them other than the comment from Paul. We might not have even, I mean, it says past tense, I'm not sure they've been processed or are available for checkout yet.
That's one of the things with, you know, donating materials in languages other than English, there may be some time where they're in the technical services department because of catalog issues. Making them accessible in the catalog. On the spreadsheet, on the next sheet that shows the breakdown of items added to the collection. I just want to let you know the total items added column, the equation's a little off. So the, the total figure at the bottom, the one eighty is not accurate, it's a little low, excluding a couple of columns, so that will be corrected for the next one.
Possible a book to be in more than one category too, no?
Question, that's a good question tonight, thank you. You've given me homework.
Say yes.
Yes. But now I'm wondering. Oh yeah, thanks to Tamara, she put that in and made it easier for all of us. So and then on to accepting the gift list, which is not complete for tonight. It is what it is as presented, so. Gift list, we have two items, a donation of three hundred fifty dollars from Anne McFates in honor of her mother, I mean McFate's birthday, which was Monday, June third, so we thank Anne for that. And then from the Need and Garden Club, we have a copy of A Story of Flowers in memory of a member who passed away. So can I get a motion to accept the gift from Anne McFate, the gift from the Need and Garden Club?
Salute.
Second, great. All those in favor say hi. All those opposed, right, guess excepting you guys. Now we're ready for the business, I guess I'll hand it back to Rob for the trust fund. Second spreadsheet is the trust fund plan spending for usually this, this is for calendar year two thousand twenty four. It's already June, which is news to anybody here, so some of this spending may occur in calendar year two thousand twenty five. So just because after the year is over, typically this is presented to trustees when we have this information or falls that it's voted on and approved before the calendar year starts. So we have categories of materials for adults, teens or children, the MLTA dues, which is the Mass Library Trustees Association, professional development, and then the MacIver series. Totally forty one thousand five hundred dollars to be spent in calendar year two thousand twenty four, perhaps leading over into calendar year two thousand twenty five from five of the trust funds that had interest or gains that were high enough that we feel good about using some of those monies to support the library in ways that match the way the trust fund was set up. This does not include the permanent donation fund, which you saw on the other spreadsheet, because that is mostly the gift, the annual gift from the friends and already has. It's already decided I will be spending that money. Can I get a motion to adopt this spending plan that we can discuss?
I knew that we'd adopt, adopt the trust fund spending plan.
Okay, second, second, my discussion.
Have you lined up plans for professional development yet or?
No, we have a day planned, well, there is a day on the calendar at the end of September for professional development day. We'll be working to plan that, to bring in the bridge speakers and decide. How we go about that, so the professional development, we also are encouraging staff to sign up for their ALA, MLA, MELA memberships and to consider asking to attend library conferences FY twenty five. It may not be, that's why I talked about calendar year two thousand twenty five, because the professional development money, if we try to spend all that before December thirty first came, it probably wouldn't work, so. Those funds should, so next fall's request should be interesting because we probably will not have spent all of this forty one thousand five hundred dollars. So it may take a year or two to get back on track because of this.
I ask a question about this, for all of them except Greenwood, it looks like we're, we're spending pretty much whatever is available to spend. But for Greenwood, we're only looking to spend a very small portion of what's expendable. You can't find anything to spend that money on now, or do you think there's a reason to wait, to wait?
I have to ask Jenna to help me on this because I believe Greenwood was a surprise.
Yeah, there were two trust funds that were not historically within our reports. And the new treasurer was able to dig up documentation that proves that they are, they do belong to the library and that we can spend the interest from them. However, they were started many, many, many years ago. So our annual practice of allocating the gain loss and a portion of the interest to the non expendable amount had not taken place. So we haven't had the practice of continually accruing the non expendable part of that fund. What it would require from me now is going back to its inception and looking at each year's interest and gain loss and doing a multi-year calculation of how much of it should actually be non expendable. That's not what I've been doing for the last two weeks.
Okay. When did it start?
If you don't spend it now, to be extended, it's expendable, we'll be able to expend it at some later time.
Right.
You could choose to do that.
Yeah, in the fall, this thing will, will look different, it's just, okay, first time it's popped up here, so we want to just be.
So you're going to be trying to establish a track record of forecasting what that is going to come out?
Um, we could go a couple of different routes, we could just compare it to another trust fund of a similar starting balance in a similar timeframe. And we could say we're just going to have a huge non expendable portion and just going forward, only spend a portion of the interest. There's a few different tactics and we could, we could weigh the pros and cons of each of those and then come to a conclusion. But we didn't want to hold this up until July first, or July, our meeting in July.
And so the second trust fund that's new is Martha Bar here, which had a small expendable balance, so we just decided to just let that one ride.
There's two discovered new trust funds that have been.
It's like grabbing the best card from the chance pile.
Findmessmoney.org. So are they just sitting out there?
Does somebody owe us money?
The good news is they've just been sitting there earning interest.
Yeah. Other discussion? All right, so voting in favor of this spending plan, I'll say aye. All those opposed? All right, trust fund spending practices, thank you. And now we are, all right, so we have the action item for the, so the PDBC is what we've been, is, is the committee here in town, that is the one that is in charge of our space planning phases, right? So doing the design studies, the construction.
So doing the design studies, the construction. They have two user representatives that are appointed by our board that represent the library at their meetings and can vote on the on the items that are relevant to our needs, which it means like we approve to pay for this expense, right? Or to, you know, go with this vendor or whatever it is. And so previously, it was Kim as library director and me as as the user representatives. I am staying on as a user representative. That's all right with this board. But if we'd like Rob to to take on that role, we need to officially vote to appoint him so that he can then go.
After a few more steps.
Okay.
So after you vote to approve, hopefully, then it goes to the board. And then once that happens, then I can go and sue Louise, the Newtown clerk, and be sworn in.
That's right.
And then I
Then you can
Officially.
So can I, can I hear a motion to appoint Rob as the user representative to the PDBC? So moved, second, second, all right, discussion?
When is that? Coming meetings happening?
There was one last night, but there was no library business on the agenda. So we meet twice a month. I don't know that I'll finish this process before the next meeting.
We just had a meeting a month ago, which we have library business.
Right, and they approved some library business and didn't beat my vote to that approval. So
That was, yeah, that was primarily to talk about the state of the study plan, the fact that it had passed from town meeting as one of the capital expenditures that was approved. And also the idea that we were going to start by by working toward a contract with UTIL who did our space planning study as
Design.
To do the design work. So so Hank now is able to do that negotiation with UTIL in order to start that process.
It's like couldn't be allowed, just to say a few words about phase one.
Sure.
So I'm going to add phase one as a standing part of the director's report, so I don't forget like I just did on Saturday. Let's trustees know, the architects are going to do a scan of the library with a laser at the end of June. It's completely safe. It's safer than a checkout scanner at the market. And it's, there's no noise. There'll be no disruption to patrons or staff. But that's some work that's going to happen at the end of this month in preparation for the design of phase one. And they're doing more than the second floor. They're doing the whole building, not the third floor. The first, second floor. And that information will also help the future phases.
That just gives you an accurate account of square footage and dimensions.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm not messing with you.
Nope, that's
Reminder, active motion is to appoint Rob as our user representative for further discussion. All right, moving to a vote. All those in favor of appointing of this appointment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Right, Dr. D now, it's like, great. So now we are on to strategic plan goals, five and six of you. Ready to go?
You got number five.
All right. So referring to the the draft report that Michael and I prepared with great help from Rob and the library staff. So this this goal five is is about ensuring staff is well trained, fluent in analytic resources to provide the best collection of materials for the community. We have a number of priority action items in the in the first two objectives, being evaluating standardized collection development practices and reduce wait times associated with popular physical and digital materials. With respect to our first priority action item in that first objective, to create an annual circulation report by statistical categories to determine by a load of circulations per number of holdings and use the information to adjust selections, building heavily used areas, and relying on the network for less popular areas. What we heard from library staff is that the focus on this effort will occur in fiscal year '25 due to staffing issues in fiscal year '24. And while we continue to focus most fun staff time and library space on the heavily used areas of the collection, it's important to remember that we're going to continue to work to grow the the use of all parts of the collection. For instance, we have a priority around the world languages collection through marketing efforts. Not all of these represent the most heavily used items, but are important things that we want to grow both the collection and the use of. And so we had a, we're going to comment on that, which is many of the lower use collection items, such as world languages are a strategic priority for the library. We're glad to see that libraries take an intentional approach to relying on circulation statistics to inform in our collective development strategy. Second priority action item was to investigate higher collection development specialist library. And what we're learning is that this priority action needs to be reevaluated in light of new staff. And comment here, library is several staff needs currently, as we talked about in the personnel section of the director's report today, many of which are higher priority than having a specialist that's working exclusively on collection development. And so it makes sense for us to be focusing our efforts elsewhere as we work on personnel. Moving on to the next objective and its priority action items. First one, explore and investigate offering a sub-collection to allow access to new titles and bestsellers without waiting on holds. So in quarter one, we created an express collection for popularity with adult fiction and nonfiction titles and copy circulated for seven days with no renewals, no holds allowance, a nice change. In quarter four, we did the branding and the marketing efforts increased along with funding as a collection relaunch, calling it the Lucky Day Collection. I dropped a little photo in there of Lucky Day Collection next to the elevator, which I think is a really wonderful addition. That was my comment, basically like
Took it out, took out my first Lucky Day book.
Oh, nice. It was your lucky day. So moving on to the next prior reaction item, allocate more funding towards overdrive advantage purchasing. Here we added additional $4,000 to the fiscal year '24 library state aid request and $2,325.80 within the fiscal year '24 operating budget for overdrive advantage licenses, which met the demand to address the constraints on the collection due to continuing high cost of ebook licenses. We commented here that overdrive really represents an important future direction of our library holdings and that we were grateful that staff were being intentional about curating our licenses here. We expect the library will invest more in this resource in the future in ways that serve our patrons best. Third priority action item here, a relevant staff should take specific training on overdrive advantage, cross-purser purchasing options, become fluent, possible public libraries e-card benefits. So here, we learned that the digital specialists of reference library injected pavement is to be can train through Miniman Central site for overdrive advantage and cannaby. And in fiscal year '25, we're going to review with the reference staff, the BTL statewide e-card program to make sure everyone's well versed in those benefits. And noted here that because of the care being put into our overdrive collection development, oh, wait, sorry. Because of the, there's more bullet points than there are bullet points. So I had another comment to read. Because of the care being put into our overdrive collection development, we understand our training to be currently be complete here, right? And then there's a second bullet point referring to that e-card program. So many patrons are unaware of the opportunities and value of the BTL e-card. We expect reference staff and marketing materials will focus on helping patrons become acquainted with it. So this might be a good potential item to think about how we're carrying over some of these priority actions into the fiscal year '25 priorities. So that's just a one of the aspects that might be helping us doing that planning going forward. So any questions on that goal five report? Or hand it over to Michael for
Well, I just, I appreciate this really good overview here and it does mention a number of interesting things. I'm thinking when you mentioned the BTL e-card, I just wonder if there'd be some how to, how you communicate that to the public, a training session or what sort of, how one would bring people up to speed, patrons up to speed on that.
Newsletter? We can put an article in newsletter. We can also put something on the website specifically at the front in the news section telling people to go here to go register for a card.
Now, the reciprocal lending through LibBee in e-card is still important from BTL, but not as important, because through your Needham library card in LibBee, you have access to the BTL's entire overdrive collection. But there still are BTL databases and digital resources that the NBLC doesn't have, that Miniman doesn't have, that are useful to patrons. So our messaging would just would be not broad about the e-card benefits, but what is the added benefit or added value for a Needham library patron to have one? So as not to confuse them about LibBee.
Right.
You know, so that'll be part of the discussion. What is the message of the BTL e-card?
Right.
Specifically, we want to get out there.
Okay, goal six. Is to allocate time and resources to explore the future use of interior and exterior space and design. One of the priority action items for FY '24 was the sensory progress during the FY '24 objectives and priority. And Q1 Needham Rotary approached about funding the purchase of furnishing and equip equipment to allow the storytime room to offer a sensory program. We will explore the idea of adding sensory focused equipment to our library of things collection. Further work was put on hold at this time. Notes and comments. We hope the library will reopen discussions with Needham Rotary and explore the purchase of materials for sensory program offered by the children's department. We imagine that this could be part of all, excuse me, be part of all or most children's facing events and enabling sensory sensitive. Did I say that correctly? Sensory sensitive? Just it's like, wow, okay, I got it out. Programming options. This is also an opportunity to grow our library of things collection to allow families to try similar sensory materials. A next priority action item for FY '24, to explore systems within children's room at area libraries to determine a plan to consolidate CR selections, calls, numbers into approachable system, identify priority areas to begin implementation. Progress during FY '24 objectives and priorities. This priority action item is being reevaluated. At this time, it's being reevaluated. Notes and comments. We expect that our remaining categorization and shelving systems for the children's collection will be part of the phase two of our library space renovation plans currently scheduled for design and construction in 2025 through 2026. We understand, excuse me, the collection needs to be resized as the starting point for both the design work and any for future ideas about changing our systems for browsing. Any questions?
I have a question. Just what does it mean when we say this priority action is being reevaluated? Is that you're you're rethinking whether this is in fact a priority?
At this time, you know, I think part of this has to be in conjunction with phase two. I don't want to invest a lot of staff time and resources into something that could be undone as we design phase two. It may have been a little but it is something that we will address.
That makes sense.
Any further questions?
Yeah, the notes and comments are all based on the conversations of Michael and Rob as we were going through the feedback we got.
The system seems to be working out to be a pretty efficient way to to review the future plan.
I don't know another way, because I haven't been here long enough, but this is working well for me.
Leads right into the next agenda.
Yes, so we got to the next agenda. So so we wanted to talk about strategic plans. First, so wrapping up this sheet plan and moving on to thinking about this year '25, how we want to look at that as a process. Rob, I think you're going to make some offers of thoughts on this.
Yes. I'll offer some thoughts on FY '25 and then circle back to '24. So our plan is to present a draft to the trustees at the July 9th meeting of an FY '25 action plan. So this week, I'm meeting with each department supervisor to start to brainstorm. And over the next month, they'll be meeting with their individual staffs to get their input. And then we'll circle back and have a department head meeting about it and then further meetings. So that's the draft that you receive in July is one that is born from staff input, so that it's, makes sense for those people who work day and day out in the departments and what is achievable and to set them up for success and to move the strategic plan forward in a significant way. So, you know, this is sort of a month late. Ideally, tonight, I'd be presenting a draft to you for start of a discussion and then maybe a vote in July. So this will be a month late. So hopefully in August, the discussion can continue with the votes at the August meeting. But I did not want to rush it and wanted to involve staff as much as possible in crafting the FY '25 action plan, so that it's got a lot of great things that we can do that our staff support, so we can get the ground running quickly. Then on FY '24, I was just interested in how trustees felt now that the review process has ended, how it went, so that as we think of the FY '25 review, we can make any changes that trustees deem necessary. For for me, you know, starting the process so early in the fiscal year, sort of for a couple of goals, quarter four is not part of the discussion, you know, the work that we've continued. So I don't know if there's some things we can do upfront that could help shorten the review period for trustees to still get the important feedback and review done, but give us more time to succeed and achieve and show you what we've done. One idea I have for the FY '25 plan is stolen as the best librarians do, to steal from other librarians. Massachusetts Library System, their action plan for this fiscal year coming up includes a measurement of success column, so that I would put in our FY '25 action plan so that right from the start, we have listed measurements of success, which you know, will help trustees in their evaluation of the action plan and what we've done, which may allow a review to occur, you know, maybe later in FY '25, so that we can report as much as possible to trustees before the review starts.
Is that how it would be called?
Measurement of Success, so that it would be similar to what we have with the action items, priority actions for FY '24, but then measurement of success that would be populated in the draft. And then, you know, the review column would be the final, right next column. But it may allow not starting, with process starting in February or March.
Yeah, well, we developed the template in February and then the first presentation was in April.
Yeah.
Okay. Which meant that the data collection started in March.
Right.
So we're kind of measuring FY24 goals three quarters of the way through the year rather than at the end.
Right, so maybe it'll just save us a month on our end, but at least some extra time, I think, would be helpful for us and for trustees to get as much of a full picture of the work that we've done.
And this is a good thought as we look to next year, as to what process we want to adopt. If we can design for a particular type of annual review that includes things like measurements, it's explicit, then that might allow us to shorten that timeline next spring. It should be good for us to actually report all the things we're doing through the entire year. But also maybe use our time better in meetings. Instead, we had like, you know, three presentations, maybe it's only two or one.
Right, if you're pre-measured, go like, give your goals and you're pre-measured. We hit our goal, we didn't hit our goal, then you don't need to now analyze whether or not we hit our goal or not. It's already pre-measured.
Right, or have the staff come up with whatever measurements they think apply to those action plans when they're responding to the survey. Right.
I think we can always point out too that these are non-exclusive measures of success. It's what could success look like, not what does it look like.
Sure.
And that way, there might be a path to success that we don't anticipate. But it would be helpful, your point, Rob, just to have some specific examples, because then that helps to guide progress during the year, which is, which is good, and there's no surprise at the end where people might see success differently and should make the review process a little bit easier. Maybe we can consolidate it by one or two, two months. So that we have more of that fiscal year behind us when we're evaluating.
The other thing that came up in our conversation was the idea that if you had a more explicit plan that we were able to adopt, you know, by August, we might also, we could incorporate a make-year review discussion, which wouldn't be so much as an evaluation, but actually a check-in on the priorities and make sure that they still make sense for the second half of the fiscal year. And so that might be another thing that we could think of as part of the process. Well, yeah, adapt it if it needs to be adapted.
And another benefit of adding a measurement of success to the fiscal year action plan is that we'll have an internal document of breaking down those measurements of success and responsibility by department for achieving those. So it'll help us as a real working document to get to success.
Is there a way to get a copy of that?
Oh, yeah, I'll send you a link to the MLS's action plan, which is on the website.
So the fiscal year action plans, that, when, is the timing of that from when?
July, a good draft.
Oh, okay.
And then August, final draft, after also input from trustees and then hopefully a vote in August so we can, you know, in July, we'll we'll do work, you know, we'll consider, you know, that this is good and then maybe some tweaks and stuff. But, you know, we won't be losing six weeks.
And then our goal will be to have our final plan presentation review in the June meeting each year, right?
Perhaps.
And when would we kind of get started, I guess, would be, we do meet in June this year.
Yeah, we might have to figure that out in terms of the dance between the review and the planning for the next year. That'll be somebody.
When would we begin to do the review? Which we want to be finished with by June, I guess is the goal.
But hypothetically, I mean, even if we have three kind of teams like we did this year, which personally I thought works well, I kind of liked that.
Yeah.
There's no reason it wouldn't create any more work to do it all at the same time rather than sequentially. It would just be a longer meeting, so.
Yes.
Because it might all be pre-populated.
It could be, yeah, that, right, it might be, could be quicker because it'll be more and more well-defined. But I think one thing to discuss tonight too is, you know, for these reviews that we've done of all the goals, you know, we're going to create and compile a master report of all of these. And we'll have to think about what does that look like? I mean, you know, a lot of it's probably just to be kind of taking these reports that the teams have prepared and just kind of formatting and overlaying it into one document. And then maybe have some sort of intros, high-level statistics from the year, think about what that might look like and what the timing would be for that, for getting the final approval. Maybe it's kind of in concert or around the same time in terms of draft and final as the action plan for next year.
I was thinking that exactly, that I think we could do the synthesis of that report. At least the, the reports that we have put together with a cover letter on top that I can draft and have that ready for July. The statistical report is going to have to wait until August, I think, based on what you told me. We won't have all of the statistics we would want to report for fiscal year 24 by July. But we could have kind of the everything but that ready for the trustees to review at the July meeting. So I'll, maybe I'll reach out to Rob and maybe Ken, I love your thoughts as well. We have a lot of expertise in editing this type of document together as to how we put that together for the July meeting so that we can send that out as a packet.
In your heart, the July meeting, I'll be listening to this to do what I will be.
Oh, right, thank you. Right. Great, any other discussion or questions about how we're looking at the strategic plan? Okay, great. So other, the last piece of new business here is about this opportunity we had from the select board to provide feedback to their upcoming goals for fiscal year 25, 26. So they sent out this copy of the fiscal year 24, 25 document, which was the existing kind of select board goals, that they were going to be the starting point for anything that they might revise going forward. And so all departments have an opportunity to provide feedback. And we didn't have a lot of time to prepare this, but I, I took the lead on drafting a letter. I got feedback from Rob Queen on this. And I got some excellent edits from Kay right ahead of this meeting on how to make this a lot more readable, which I appreciate. But this is, this is like similar to how we presented a library to, a library letter to town meeting in, in support of the warrant items that were related to us. I used that exact same format for the letter and just put in new content. Because Jay did a great job of drafting that previous letter. And so this is for us to kind of discuss and see, does this represent a good set of recommendations to the select board based on, you know, the existing goals, what we're trying to do and what we could maybe ask them to consider. So I opened it up to discussion with this draft as a starting point.
I thought it was an excellent first draft, you know, and I think it really covered everything. I had only one comment because I thought it was in very good shape. I'm not sure to what extent we're, we're, there's, there's more to do in terms of using this as an advocacy thing. And I, and my only small comment was, because I thought it was just great, that there were a few things that were identified as goals. You had a variety of quotes within the letter that you tied it in to particular things and the goals. But I thought there were a few other goals that I wasn't sure if it would, it made sense to add a sentence tying it in. So I, I came up with one long on, run-on sentence that maybe Kay's going to want to take a look at. But, but just to, to, to note a few of the goals and that relate to us and the sentences. "We appreciate that many of the select board's goals justify the town's continuing investment in the library," too. And now I have several quotes to quote, "Support an environment for creativity." That's one quote. "That, quote, enhances neighborhood livability," another quote. "And, quote, values public art," another quote. In other words, it was just like one more sentence
Yeah.
that, that ties into some of the specific things that were identified, you know. So I can show you, I can send you that sentence to see if you think it makes sense. You might have decided to remove some, you know, it might have been too much and you felt you had enough. But I can show you that just, just to think about possibly.
That sounds nice, yeah, and maybe something that would add to the first paragraph?
I think.
Where you imagine it kind of.
I think so, I, I, I think, I think so, so. There's just a few other things to identify that, that seem to tie into what we did.
Yeah, I like that, and I totally missed the art one, which I'm really glad you brought up too.
So I'll, I'll send you, I'll send you the sentence, you and Rob and Rob and you guys. Okay, so we'll get an updated.
I have, I have one more grammatical thing.
Yeah, please.
The very last two sentences, like before sincerely. "We're excited to be partners with the select board and the rest of the town on achieving meeting of upcoming goals. Let's work together," feels like, I, I think it should be like, let us continue to work together or let us like, we look forward to working together with the select board.
Yes, I think I did it edit to that.
You already edited that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ken. Good, we're on the same grammatical. Yeah, exactly.
Absolutely, great, thank you. Other thoughts on the letter?
No, but I agree with Jay, I think this is like a very good, like, letter from us to the select board saying, yes, we agree with you, thank you, continue to give us money.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that's the goal of this letter, right?
Yeah, yeah, yes, the goal of this letter is to say that we are extremely well-aligned in these areas. That we should be part of how we spend money in this town to achieve these goals.
Nicely done.
All right, excellent, well, thank you. So I'll make the revisions. Kay had some excellent ideas about moving some of the, the points where I'm identifying particular goals or the, or the themes of those goals and making those kind of like, like headers for the paragraphs.
Roadmap through the letter and a few things, just, you know, some small wording changes that shifted the tones slightly to be, you know, just reaching out to the goal or the select board.
Is, is the plan for you to like send out the revised version for us to like vote like by email or something?
It's not really a vote thing. I think if you feel good about the content of this, I think I, I would feel empowered to forward this. I don't, did we vote on the letter that you sent to town meetings? I don't think.
I don't.
We might have.
I think we approved it, yeah.
I think we approved it.
And I think we should just because it's going out as official documentation.
I think that's probably a good idea.
From this board to that board.
But we would have to.
The only problem is it's due by June 21st. So we don't have another public meeting in which we could.
We can, we can support your plan to submit a letter that's based largely on this letter that we've reviewed with a few minor, you know, revisions as you've determined.
I'm happy to. It gets a little tricky sending out a document and inviting replies.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Open town meeting.
What if, to your advice, we approved it in substantially the form presented to trustees? I always do that with board resolutions, so there's.
Yes.
Substantially the form, that's good lawyer language.
That is very good lawyer language, well done.
As Rob would say, yes.
In substantially the form presented to us.
Great, can I get a motion then to that effect?
I move to approve this letter to the select board in substantially the form presented to us.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of backing this letter, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Forgot, forgot to say aye. We will get like a copy of the final letter, I guess.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it, yeah, I can send it out before then as, as, as an information.
Right, right, right.
I just can't invite feedback. Okay, great, thank you, thank you for all of your thoughts on that. So I wanted to make sure we had our, had our input on this with this type turnaround. So
Yes.
We don't have any old business, I believe, this, this evening. So we're moving on to library art exhibits committee report?
Yes, so we have not had another meeting since our last trustees meeting, but we do have a couple of wonderful artists on display this month. Dan Callahan, that was recruited by Gay Allen, I think. And his landscape pictures are really quite, he's quite accomplished landscape artist. And then we have, in our cases, we have a ceramic artist, Sarah Farrow, who I know from the Potter's shop at Gorse Mill Studios. And she's filled both cases with really extraordinary ceramic pieces that are based on nature. And her, kind of, she has an interesting ancient belief in this, the rude belief system that she, is reflected in her work. So, and we are moving forward with our, planning our next meeting to discuss further the Americans Who Tell the Truth exhibit that is being funded by the LFN in January and that's coming up there in some.
The cyber series update?
I do not have one, actually, right now, putting together a program for the fall and winter. I'll work down on that. You have one of your colleagues who's coming back, I believe, on a trip to speak about meteors.
Yep.
And in the hunt for them, so hopefully that will be the first item, but that is all the update for now.
I like that idea of meteors, meteor hunters, it's just.
That's neat.
Asteroid hunter.
Asteroids.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that would be meteorites and asteroids.
Jay, you are our, our.
Your liaison.
Trainer right now, which I want to tell him some updates.
Well, the friends, as Rob mentioned, had a very successful book sale last weekend, but the weekend before. It was around $7500, I went on the Saturday, it was a nice crowd and big success. They had, as far as program, and they have another meeting there this summer, next week. I'm not sure exactly what will be covered then. They had a, their annual meeting where Emily Norton, who's the director of the Charles River Watershed Association spoke. I wasn't able to come, it was this Thursday, I don't know if any of you were here.
Yep.
It was a good crowd, a good.
It was a sold-out crowd, as I think every.
Every, every friend program has been a sold-out crowd.
The street, it was, it was pretty good. No, it was a very interesting program about the Charles River and its health and how it impacts Needham and how we impact it, including dam removal, so.
Yeah, I wish I could have been there, it'll, it'll be, it was recorded and it'll be available on the Youtubes. On YouTube, at some point, we'll get on the YouTube site. And I can also speak to the program committee that's putting the, the schedule for speakers next year. And it's a very exciting program, it's pretty much all set. And I don't know if Margaret Panzer wants me to let you know in advance, but, but, but there are some really, really frustrated speakers, Sebastian Smee, who's a wonderful art historian, is going to be talking about Impressionism. I was able to corral someone from my annual GBH person, Suzanne Simpson, who's the executive producer of Masterpiece, is going to, is going to talk. And a guy I know named Warren Zanes, who used to be in a rock band called The Del Fuegos, but now is well-known as a writer. He wrote a popular biography of Tom Petty and then most recently a, a book about Bruce the Making of Bruce Springsteen's Nebraska, which turns out they're going to be turning into a feature film with Bruce. He's tied in with Bruce, not a bad partner to have. But in any event, Warren is going to come in and also talk about his transformation from a rock and roller to a, to a successful writer. So I'm sure we'll be having all sellouts, I anticipate next, not quite sell, I don't know what you call a sellout when no one's actually buying anything, there's got to be another word for that.
Give out.
Give out, so. So anyway, that's that's the good news on on the Friends. Always looking, you know, for 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 new members and, you know, if you if you know folks. That you think might be interested in getting involved, you know. So it's a nice group and they'll be happy to hear. And I suppose I could say the same thing for my next liaison. I went. To to my first meeting of the of the foundation. I think that was last week. I can keep track of the weeks. And, you know, wonderful group. Everyone wants the same thing to support the library. I was very nice to them and only sort of midway through did I give them the impression. I want them to know that actually I'm here for your money. And my direction is to is to tell Rob to figure out how to, you know, what 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 you want to do to spend their to spend their money and then we'll take it from there. There was some, you know, conversation both within the Friends and the Foundation, you know, where. Sometimes there's uncertainty about what's the difference, what's the role of the Friends versus the Foundation and. And it's had a little bit more, you know, muddled recently when the foundation is starting to put on some. We're starting to put on some programs also, just like the Friends does. But it doesn't seem to be an issue. Anything that, you know, supports the library is fine. And some of the programs, as Gay Allen would say, that. That the foundation we're doing are now effectively library programs that they're just providing funding for. So. You know, no, no concerns. I think just a general desire by both sides to want to figure out how do they supplement each other? And if they are going to be doing, you know, programs to coordinate, make sure that, you know, there there's consistency. With it with it with attention to the the interest we have as far as diversity and inclusion to make that sure the range of. The range of programs produce, you know, a support that that goal. So. So that's it. The one thing I would say also on the on the foundation, they they did vote to to name some off new officers. I don't have the list of two, but they still haven't yet designated a new president of of the foundation that seems to be a. A work in progress. And I think their hope is by the next meeting. Somebody will be a combination of drafted or stepped up step up to take take on that role.
One thing we're we're hoping to do with regards to the coordination is Rob and Kay had this great idea that you had seen it. And I think you have had that experience in. In your previous position where the Friends Foundation, Library Director and Chair of the Trustees, kind of got together. Maybe once, twice, three times a year, just to do kind of like some strategy and coordinating amongst.
I think that's a great idea. And I think that my impression is the folks at the foundation and the Friends, you know, we would be happy. To to support that sort of. Communication, you know, it was. It was an effort, by the way, that was already begun a little bit with the Doris Kearns Goodwin event. When both the Friends and and the Foundation were were partners and collaborated to support that.
And just from my own experience, late in my career, I was involved in development at National Hospital and my understanding is that the LFN. Primary role is is development and fundraising for the library. And that, you know, people on that come on board to LFN are fundraisers. And there's a lot of different interesting. New ways of raising funds for aspect research that could could be sort of explored by the LFN.
So that's true, but at some point you don't want to focus only on the raising. You want to figure out how to spend it.
Well, that's Rob's job. To the elephant to ask to let them know what the library needs, right? So, okay.
Yeah.
So we are trustee comments. So if anyone has.
Just, I suppose, to echo again, our 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 great appreciation and best wishes. To Dimitri, who's not going far and we'll happily cross paths again. He'll have to let us come by and visit him.
Are we changing the next meeting or was it just?
Um, we talked after I sent out that email and frustration of like. Early July with the holiday and everything. So if it is okay with trustees. I could probably get the packet to you by noon on Monday, July eighth. If you want it normally, like on Friday afternoon, July fifth, that may be more problematic with the holiday, the timing of one report to. Are available to us from Minuteman and staff vacations for that. Long holiday weekend.
Were you suggesting instead that we perhaps have it on the sixteenth instead of?
I was, but then I talked to Erhars, who's, you know, talked me through it.
Okay.
And, you know, if trustees are okay with, you know, having like. Thirty hours worth of time with the packet, then it could probably stay as.
I just want to make sure you don't feel overly burdened by the.
Yes.
We can also split up the packet, right? Is there anything we can probably get out before the holiday weekend? Yes, like, you know, like, for instance, the draft report here. And so.
Most of us are probably not looking at it too closely until a couple of days or so. Before the meeting.
I think we'll be fine.
I'm thinking like noon on Monday, the eight. Not a couple of days, not Sunday.
That's fine.
Do it a few days.
Any other comments? All right, can I get a motion to to close this meeting? Second, all those in favor of adjournment? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we get adjourned unanimously.
Thank you.